Good evening on a chilly December 2nd, 2024. Welcome to our committee, the whole meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have met compliance with official notification. Roll call, please.
Ted Gallagher.
Here.
Nick Olson.
Here.
Or Gavsky.
Or Taylor.
Yeah.
Sarah Schuber-McCon.
Here.
Nick Schumacher is here.
President Steve Olson.
Here.
This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on the public comments signup sheet by the entrance prior to the start of the meeting. The board requests, refraining from making any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted to three minutes in length. Action taken at today's meeting is to forward the recommendation for final approval at the next regular school board meeting on Monday, December 9, 2024. First tonight are comments by members of the public. Do you have any members of the public wishing to speak?
Okay. Just me and I just none.
All right, and we shall move forward. Next is our report from our superintendent.
All right, I have a couple informational items and then some action items. First is Principal Fezzi here to give us an update on the high school. In here.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions?
Oh, it could be short, man.
And you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me tonight. You know, I think we're off to a pretty good start this year in looking from last year into this year. Some of those things we're celebrating, our graduation rate up hitting the 98% mark last year. Just kind of a student graduate in the last couple of weeks from that class. And we actually had a student graduate a couple of weeks ago from three years ago, three years previous. So we still are working to connect with those students and figure out if we can get them plans and pathways forward. You know, school report cards came out, and we saw, you know, I've seen those. One of the things that I'd celebrate on that is the student growth at SHS. We've been in the mid 70s to mid 80s percentiles of high schools in the state of Wisconsin over the last three years of how much growth that our students are having when they're in math and ELA, when they're at SHS. So the impact of what our faculty, our staff are doing in the classroom is definitely impressive. Looking, you know, at the ACT and those high stakes tests, our students are exceeding the state average in English Language Arts when it comes to the college and career-ready benchmarks by a pretty decent amount. Some pretty good things happening there and within many of our departments, the ACT as far as the report card only reports out in a couple of areas. One thing, you know, when you look at the culture side of things and what's happening in the building, again, a testament to our staff and the work they're doing with their students and our students and the work that they're putting in. The first three months of this school year, we have 71% fewer major disciplinary referrals than we did in the year previous, which last year we were less than the year before. So some pretty cool things happening, kind of put it in a bullet, but we've had a lot of successes this fall in terms of our students and athletes, you know, qualifying for state competitions, musicians, state-level honors, bands, and things like that. Matt Anderson being named the Associate Principal of the Year in Wisconsin. So a lot of things we've been celebrating at SHS. Couple of things I just want to highlight in pictures around the culture side. We did start a freshman orientation this year. We hope to continue to build on that. Homecoming and a lot of the activities that we've had, dances, have been super well-attended. Our fall ball was attended so well, we were worried if we could fit everybody in the building, which is a good problem to have. And things that we can adjust moving forward based on the success of that. Our student council is putting on another dance this Friday night. So, you know, and not a formal dance, more of a casual dance. But it's cool that our students are wanting to get together, wanting to have fun and still be around the school even when they don't have to. Our staff got into the fun, so I forgot you was going to be here. Sorry to embarrass you. Our staff's been getting into the fun. Their staff development day, which ended on Halloween, our departments, we had a Halloween costume contest within our departments. And there's also a picture from Unity Day not too long ago. Our staff coming together to support students, staff coming together to support each other and to have some fun. Looking at some of our school challenges, our math achievement is not where we want it to be. Talked about that a little bit more momentarily when we talk about our goal. Our attendance has improved considerably. It's still not where we want it to be. It's better than the state average of high schools, but not anywhere yet near where we want it to be in terms of our levels of chronic absenteeism. So we've got some things that we're continuing to work there. You know, mental health challenges, we've been talking about those, you know, for several years now. And I think our systems are continuing to do a nice job to support our students. But there are a lot, there are a lot of challenges and a lot of, and we're thankful for the resources that we have, a lot of resources with our counselors, with our deans, with our school social workers that are so critical to, and the additional work that our teaching staff puts in, and our support staff to support students in those areas is huge and it's a lot of what they do on a daily basis. I mentioned math achievements. We run our goals this year as schools around our areas, our achievement areas of greatest need. So we're focusing in on our math achievement goal within our focus, our action steps. We want the school to be something that, you know, connects to you too, if you're a science teacher or an English teacher or a FIAD teacher. So we want to create some action steps that are universal in our instruction, that, you know, are addressing some of the math challenges, but also will help us in every area. So briefly, our action steps, you know, are continuing to reset, for lack of a better term. It's been about a decade since we have adopted the PLC model, professional learning communities. And in that decade, obviously, you have a lot of turnover in your staff and, you know, retirements and things. So I'm really trying to bring that back to the focus and work through that process. Again, the learning, some of us, we've been around a while. It's a review and a reteaching type of situation for our newer staff. You know, it's some of the first times they've gotten the more in-depth side of things past what they received in new teacher training, which is a lot coming out at the same time. So we've been working on our PLC process, weekly monitoring and connecting with our PLCs with help from our district office staff. One of the great things that we have at the high school is the Wednesday morning time for our teachers to collaborate in PLCs. The challenge that we had when all our PLCs were meeting at the same time is that our principals and other staff, they had to supervise students and make sure, you know, make sure everything was going well there. So it didn't allow us to be as part of those meetings and involved as we want it to be and truly needed to be. So thanks to Amy and the rest of the crew, they now come over and hang out Wednesday mornings with our students so that our principal and coaches can get into those PLC meetings and work alongside our teachers, which is, I think, has been a big, big thing this year.
Aaron, I think it's also helped you address some of those grading questions.
Yeah. Getting to, you know, get those at the, you know, at the surface level, work through some challenges, work through concerns. And yeah, I think it's been a real boost in terms of our structure. The other action step I see is more on the instructional side, building thinking classrooms. Really, a quick, long and short of building thinking classrooms is it's a student-engaged learning, student-centered learning. If you walk through our classrooms, it's kind of started with the math side of things and is working out as we connect our building goal to the bigger picture of instruction. You'll see a lot more students up and around in the classroom. You'll see whiteboards all over the walls in the classroom where students are working through, working through things together. You'll see a lot more student talk is intentional, you know, a lot less, you know, from the structure of the classroom, you'll see a lot less teachers in front of the screen or up at the board and a lot more students all around, teachers interacting with them in that type of format. With that, a focus, you know, we talked about our ACT goal for math, but for all areas, the focus also on the types of questions and the depth of knowledge of those questions, getting into the higher level, higher-order thinking that really our high-stakes tests require of us. And actually, if you take it back a step, look at our standards. Our standards that we use are not written at the surface level, do okay, one type of question, they're asking our students to do a lot of higher-order thinking. So that connection kind of melds itself nicely. Within our professional development, we have our teachers demonstrating for their colleagues. Again, like I said, we started at the math side of things. In our last professional development, we had teachers in every content area demonstrating some of these building thinking classroom skills, running lessons with their colleagues as students, and then thinking through and debriefing, and then ultimately talking about how we can bring these type of ideas back to our own classrooms. So a lot of, a lot of good things going on there with our goal. And thanks to, you know, thanks to the support that we've had from Kate and Crystal and beyond as we, as we work through, you know, those. And I think we're going to see some pretty good impacts there. So I spoke a lot. Sorry, tried to go quick there. Questions?
Question. Are there any, and maybe Kate maybe could better help answer this, but are there any math trends that we're seeing where, is it our elementary that might be struggling with state standards or state testing, middle school, high school? Where are we kind of maybe dropping off and need to really focus in? Is there anything that points us in that direction?
Really, so it's like a joint, Crystal and I conversation. Are we doing more of the field work with teachers?
Okay.
I think from a data perspective, you see a pretty sharp difference in the transition from fifth to sixth grade in our districts and state-wide too. But our gap, just going to show you some data when I'm done. But yeah, the gap makes a reversal between fifth and sixth grade. And there's a drop statewide, but our drop is more significant.
Okay. Well, that's good then, maybe we can close that gap.
Thing I would add is that when you're looking at a problem like this, like how do we improve this situation, you really need to think through the lens of, are we having some curriculum issues? Or are we having some instructional issues? And so it's not necessarily the same answer at all levels, K to 12. So you have to try to solve it and address it from both of those angles sometimes or one or the other at the elementary, middle school, and high school. So it's.
Perfect. Thanks.
I like to say, I think graduation rate's great. I think it's great they were still graduating people from three years ago. Different topic though, you said 71% fewer major disciplines. Is that students not getting in trouble or are we changing the way we deal with issues or is it a combination of both or?
I think more than anything, it's student behaviors are improving considerably. You always look at your structures and the way you address things. I think we've done a better job on the PBIS side of things, which oftentimes kind of falls off at the high school level. And we've kind of refocused in that area. So as a staff, we've done activities to calibrate where we're at, how we put up scenarios, how do we address, you know, what's the scenario look like so that we're all addressing it in the same way? What is, what is a classroom managed behavior? What is, you know, an office-supported behavior? So I think, I think getting clearer there has helped somewhat in the procedural wise, but I would say the impact of some of the things that we're doing culturally and the work of our teachers has led to a, I think if you walked in today versus walked in, you know, two, three years ago, I think you could feel it when you walked in.
I think I tell you that every time we sit down. It feels so.
It feels good.
It feels really good.
It feels, you don't see a lot of kids in the hallway during class time. You've put systems in place this year particularly to make sure kids stay in the classrooms and aren't just leaving to leave, to go to the nurse or go into the counselor and they have to set up, schedule appointments. But I also think one of the big things that we're seeing at the high school is some of the impacts of the work we've done at the middle school. So as those kids have learned expectations around cell phones or all of those other things they're carrying up, I think, to the high school. And I think you're reaping some of the benefits of that too. Yeah.
Just a follow-up about that same issue. I know there was additional training done around restorative process and ensuring that there's a restorative process and also the consequences hand in hand. And I'm wondering if that's any causation. Obviously, that would be a hypothesis, but how, how is that process and additional training that I know was?
One of the current, yeah, one of the ones that we worked really hard is we did the Safe and Responsive Schools Task Force three years ago. And so now annually, as an admin team, we really review the action plan that came out of there because it's really easy to do good work like that. And then it kind of fizzles off. So we've been really intentional each year in reviewing that. Kristin Regus continues to provide training and support across the district. I think her and David Coy right now are actually making some instructional videos for staff to model that. So we continue to kind of plan through that and incorporate into our admin meetings. There's something else.
Yeah, I would say in addition to the restorative conversations, when something significant happens, I think the front-end aspect of restorative practices and the philosophy of what our teachers are doing in the classroom before things happen.
It's about the behavior. It's about the relationships they develop, not just after the behavior.
The culture, the intentional culture building, the connections that our staff will make with students. If you don't have those, if you don't have those first conversation, if something does go awry, it's not going to work. And so I think where we've really seen, and I think there's a lot of power in the conversation when something does, it does happen, but that the front-end work is where the really impact comes.
And I also want to just add, Kristin not only is a restorative practice coach, but she's the bar coordinator at the middle school. And the real, you know, significant part of the bar program is creating time, space, and training for teachers to build those relationships. So I think, you know, that's also a factor in what we're seeing too.
I just, anecdotally, I know my son, he's new at the high school, and he's really had a lot to share about his relationship with some of the teachers, which I usually, sorry, sometimes it's very negative and that's, sometimes kids do that. But this year, I'm just noticing maybe that's that intentional relationship building because he's got like a relationship with teachers and I know their names. So yeah, it just seems like a different thing. And I hope that didn't sound negative, but I was just saying, I'm like, wow, it's a change.
Teenagers all day.
Exactly. He's always got something to say. I'm wondering with the attendance issue and ritual truancy, things like that, are those coded at all? And I'm wondering causation or some kind of relation to mental health. I personally have just heard experiences of students really struggling with anxiety coming into the high school.
No, there isn't. In many of those cases, you know, you're trying to contact the student and the family and the, so there isn't a, not a formal attendance code then.
Okay.
Puts a correlation to those, but the correlation is very strong and.
And I think your counselors and social workers would definitely agree with that. Okay.
And I'd also just add from a state and national perspective, in our state association newsletter this month, it was all about schools are trying to do to support attendance. And it's a pretty pervasive issue across, not our state, but across the country. We're mirroring similar trends. It's not abnormal, but it's definitely still concerning.
Okay. Okay, I have a couple action items. The first action item, every December, we bring forward a calendar for the board to approve for the next school year. And everybody around Superior is waiting for this to be approved because then they all use sign as their, no, I'm just kidding. But I have multiple questions in the last few weeks. So just a little bit about the process to get here. I say this almost every year, but this year again, when you really look at when Christmas is, when January 1st is, and some of those other things, it doesn't leave a lot of room for variation. Again, I continue to hear from staff that there is kind of a split between our staff about whether we have long winter breaks and get out early or whether we have short winter breaks, did I say that wrong? Long winter breaks and get out late, short winter breaks and get out early in June. And so we had like, I gave them three different options to vote on, and the two kind of came really close. And so I gave them a second round of voting, knowing that if I took a third out, what does, what does this look like? So this is the calendar staff identified by 54%. So again, it's very close, but this is what they said.
How many staff voted on?
Um, over 400. And it was interesting because I had more people vote the second round than I did the first round. So I thought that was interesting. I think we did have an email sent to us and.
Excuse me. We should, we should have a motion in a second before we continue discussion.
Motion to approve. Second.
There's a motion in a second then to approve this academic calendar, now further discussion.
Were you able to see the other options?
I don't have them with me tonight. Did get the email that I think every board.
It just had one other option in, three of them.
There was three options. Yeah. So originally, there was three. The options basically were, it was like adding days off of the winter break and then taking days off in June. So you just keep going backwards on the, what was the question, Brooke, that you received?
Well, it was just the concern, and we got this last year. I remember the same concern was brought up with graduation being so far before the end of school, those teachers that have the mixed grades struggled to find things for their students to do. And I do understand that.
I do too.
How many teachers or classes are disrupted by that? Do we have?
Well, first of all, I just want to say, I, you know, I, I struggle with that because this is something I want to make sure all staff have the opportunity to vote on. And I know it affects only a few teachers at the high school. It's a valid concern. And so I, I did want to honor that. But Aaron, did you want to speak to that at all?
I couldn't tell you how many. I mean, yeah, most of our elective classes potentially, you know, in some, you know, with high school, it's messy because you may have senior taken algebra two or you may have senior, you know, like, it's a lot of classes that it's, I don't know that, it's not a lot of classes that it's like half of my students are gone. But it's a lot of classes where.
It might be one.
Three of them are gone or five of them are gone. So I don't know.
So the option one had the best scenario where it would only been three. And yet this is the option that most people chose. So it.
And then the other part of it is I do want to honor graduates, two seniors, and let them out a little earlier, I think, you know.
Well, and the question was, can't graduation be on June 5th? And I said, we can't have graduation on the same day as last day of school. Because of the logistics that the high school staff has to go through. Like, is that fair? I don't know how that we could possibly do that. It's a whole day of it. Yeah.
Well, I know with the other option, we were going to do June 8th as the last day.
Right.
But then that's the other concern is going to school on one day, on a Monday, is kind of.
Well, and here you're going to do that anyway.
Well.
We're going to come back to school on that.
Friday, the Friday.
Friday in January. So you just have.
Either way, you're going to have.
Right.
That's.
Right. So there was no ideal situation.
There really isn't.
But this is the one the majority of staff chose.
When you gave out all three, the top two were option two and three?
Yeah.
And then?
Or I don't, I don't, you mean which two were the last, the two in the second round? I think it was option two and three. Yeah.
I assume it'd be two and three if that's who we got. And then more people voted the second time?
Yes.
The first time?
Yes.
And they voted for, which option is this, two?
This was option two, I think.
These are the calendars, sorry, my memory, I don't remember. Did they start on the 1st of September?
They all start on the same day. Yes. The first is Labor Day. Oh. We can't start before September 1st by law without a waiver. And our staff don't want to start before September 1st. I asked them that last year. And this calendar was also put together. I put, I did a pretty comprehensive survey with staff last year. So the feedback I got from them last year also helped to kind of craft this option as well.
Now, are there any possible ways to take one of the days and put it on the Friday, the January 2nd? Or are they having to be strategically?
We're recommending this is the calendar we go with after all the communication and the work that we've done for the last few weeks based on, you put many, many factors into this one. And we're not going to make everybody happy. I've learned that a long time ago with this calendar.
You know, breakdown of, I guess, what level of teachers voted for what?
I don't, I don't have data that says the high school voted this way and the middle school voted this way and elementary voted this way. I don't have it broken down that way.
I just, I hate to find a date thing at the end.
Yeah.
Do we give teachers ideas, suggestions, activities to do with the kids that are left that may not be able to do instructional time?
I think they can do instructional time.
Yeah. They just can't do some of the assessments though.
Well, I mean, they, for many of them, it's a chance to, you know, it's reassessment, it's wrap things up. I think, I think it's an issue for a handful of people. Personally, I've heard from a couple people, not a, it is a 50 high school teacher who's coming to me saying that this is a concern, an issue.
I think previous years too, it wasn't just what the students, some of the classes that had most seniors or all seniors, I guess. And then what are those staff members doing when all the kids have already graduated? For those five days, I think that's always been an issue the last few years.
Issue from your perspective?
At least that's been presented to us.
It's an issue. I don't know.
Of anybody who doesn't have kids.
I mean, there's a couple that, you know, might.
A lot?
Right now, but that's also the, that's not a lot. But it's also the, it's prime time, it's your last personal day, day, hard to find stuff, so those people are typically coming in or, it's also a time where students want to roam, so we have them up all the way. And there's extra supervision and things like that.
My real concern is, you know, just minutes for minutes sakes. And I know this happens all the time, but that January 2nd is just kind of ridiculous. You know what I mean? Like.
And this isn't, this is based on state requirements.
I know. I just.
I didn't vote for this, we, I hope it's not, yeah.
The Wednesday before Thanksgiving?
They want the Wednesday before Thanksgiving mostly because of Thanksgiving, hunting. We lose a lot, a lot of kids and a lot of staff on that day.
Some kids can't. Some kids, or some districts get the whole week for acting off. So it is a big deal around.
It is. I've asked that question in other surveys as well.
I'd support that. It's hard because, you know, the, in the, I read the email before I came. Nothing. The teaching part of it, the learning part of it on the second. I can speak to the fact that even the last day of school, there's minimal.
It's very difficult.
Going on.
Especially, I would say it's easier to come back on the second than it would have been to come up on, back on January or June 8th. On January 2nd, we can spend a lot of time, we need to spend a lot of time revisiting expectations, and it's not necessarily, I mean, the middle school does tons of that. I mean, the middle school does tons of that. I can speak from experience. I don't know what the high school does necessarily, but the elementary and the middle school for sure go over expectations and routines again. Two weeks without school, kids need to relearn those things. And so it is a nice day to kind of ease back into the second semester. So I would prefer, if we had to go one day, it's the Ju- January day, not the June day, because the June day is kind of a waste.
Um, last year I had somebody after the fact of voting um, who is active in the community and has a lot of youth that work for her um, at the baseball fields and things say, when we go later into June, that really messes up a lot of summer work for these kids and the training that they have to do. So it does affect not just the district, but other things when we go later into June. So that is a perspective to also keep in mind as well.
Is there any further discussion?
Should we put this one at the end?
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
All right. Um, next one is consideration for overnight field trip. Uh, Caitlin is here, so she has filled out the form. Um, this is our Superior Days trip. We've been working closely with, um, the Superior Days group. They want us, it's very helpful to have as many students there as possible. So we're hoping to have sixteen students. Is that where we're at?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
We have
Wasn't sure if there's a question mark after you said yes?
A couple more who I think would be great additions and very interested, just depending on if the original six, you know, yes, we'll be right around sixteen.
Okay.
Yep. Make or take one or two either way.
Uh, okay. Oh, should we? Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve that consideration of the overnight field trip.
There's a motion at second to consider the overnight field trip for Superior Days in Madison. Now discussion.
I will say we had several students in attendance at the first meeting for Superior Days the other day. Um, fantastic group, very actively involved, talking
I prepped them ahead of time. We
Voting on things. They were very engaged. Um, and so it was very cool to see them be a part of it. And I think they're going to be just as great down at Superior Days.
Mayor Payne was ready to hand it over to one of the students.
Yeah, he was ready.
But I think the, from that night, we, sitting in a first time. The amount of time that they're going to get is limited, but the amount of preparation that they're going to have, Caitlin, is going to be enormous. So that they have the opportunity to sit and, and speak with whatever legislator they can and stuff. I was just so impressed with the way that it was all set up and then taking a look at what, what you're going to have to do. Uh, getting the kids prepped.
Yeah, I think we have an advantage this year. You know, we can prep our students around this issue, knowing like right now that this is going to be one of the issues. Um, and that we've already started some of that prep work with them. Uh, you know, the, the past couple of years that we've taken students, they haven't really found out what their issue is going to be until a couple of days before they head down to Madison and we do a, you know, quick study on that and, and get them up to speed. So uh, we do have more time to, to prep them. And I think the issue, uh, while all issues are, are personal to them and they can certainly speak to on a personal level, I think this one, uh, you know, they're going to be able to draw on a lot of personal experiences too, especially as very active and concerned teenagers who have seen some of the things our district has had to do the last couple of years. So we're, we're set up in a good position to have some very well-informed students down there.
It's important to note that the number one issue and it had unanimous, not unanimous, but overwhelming support was public school funding, getting this fixed in this state.
And the inequities.
In the inequities. And so school districts don't have to continue to go back to their communities and, and ask them to bear all the brunt. It, it's long overdue that that this formula has changed nineteen ninety-three is a heck of a long time.
Too bad it took a resolution for it to actually be a Superior Days issue too. I mean, it has to directly impact
The referendums?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Referendum, excuse me. Yeah. It has to directly impact Superior, our region to be a topic that we bring down there. So
I said, I've been working on this for six, six
Exactly.
I'm glad this is not an issue. So
Yeah. And I'm hopeful that through the voices of the kids who this is actually impacting, it will mean a lot more. And so hopefully they'll be bold and brave and speak up. So.
Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
All right. Last item, I think on my agenda here is, um, I'll let Jen kind of talk a little bit about this action item. Um, I will say this is a conversation we've had for a number of years. Jen is now leading our American Indian Education Parent Advisory Committee. Um, and so I'll, I'll pass it to, okay?
Hey, hang on one second, Jen.
Sure.
Because it is an action item, we need a
I'll make a motion to recommend the American Indian Education Parent Advisory Committee add drumming, or sorry, approval to add drumming to the graduation ceremony starting in twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion at second to the administration's recommend, recommendation of adding drumming to the graduate ceremony.
Go ahead, Jen.
Okay. Good evening. Thanks for having us. Um, I, I'm here with some people, some members of our American Indian Education Parent Advisory Committee, A-PAC for short. Um, we're here to, uh, talk to you about the importance of native drumming and why we would like to see it included and incorporated into our graduation ceremony in June. Um, I'm going to let them speak on our behalf, but I'd like to introduce who's here with us tonight. Becky Scherf is our new family engagement coordinator, uh, for Indigenous families with our district. Um, Oso Fish is one of our students. Um, and he is, uh, part of the drumming circle. And so he's been participating in that and learning that. Troy House is our drum instructor. So.
Say goodbye. All right. Who's you? Members of the school board, thank you for providing me with the opportunity to speak today on behalf of our Indigenous families. As the Indigenous Family Engagement Coordinator for the district, I want to address the importance of including drumming in our school graduation ceremony, particularly in our community where nearly twenty percent of our students identify as Indigenous. Drumming is not just a musical element. It is an expression of culture and community. For Indigenous peoples, it serves as a means of storytelling, celebrating significant events and connecting with our ancestors. By allowing drumming at graduation, we honor these rich traditions and invite our students to celebrate their heritage openly. Incorporating drumming promotes unity and respect among our diverse student body. It sends a powerful message that we value and embrace all cultures represented in our schools. In doing so, we foster a supportive environment where all students can feel proud of who they are. This inclusion serves as an educational opportunity for the entire school community. By bringing drumming to the forefront, we can spark conversations about Indigenous history, traditions and values, enriching the learning experience for all students. For Indigenous students, seeing their cultural practices celebrated at graduation can instill a sense of pride and empowerment. It teaches them that their heritage is valued and recognized within our school community, fostering a greater sense of belonging. Finally, involving Indigenous drum groups in our graduation ceremony strengthens our ties to our community and encourages the participation of Indigenous families and community members, creating a sense of togetherness and shared celebration. I urge the school board to consider the inclusion of drumming in our graduation ceremony. It is an opportunity to celebrate our diverse culture, promote unity and empower our Indigenous students. Let us work together to create a space where every student feels seen, heard and celebrated. Bye.
I'm Troy House. I do the drum circle at the middle school on Tuesday and Thursdays. Um, the students, I usually have between ten and eleven, maybe a little bit more. Then, um, and that's from four to, four to six. We have a little snack during that time. Kids are well behaved and surprised.
Engaging.
Yeah.
From third grade all the way through high school.
Yeah.
Nice.
Yep. And, uh,
Do we transport them? No? Okay.
We, we did offer it, but many, all of them have been able to get transportation themselves. So
Yeah, yeah. And I, I think it's really important to to have, uh, the drum at graduation for Indigenous students, both that for the non-Indigenous students too, because it's a because we'll, uh, we would be singing like so honors on the cup. And then it would honor them. You know, walking across the stage, getting their diploma and so on. And then if they, after high school, if they're wanting to go to college, whatever, they want to go for, you know, it's the big role or honor. And I'm a graduate of two thousand and three. So, yeah. And I, I've been in Indian education ever since I was playing, you know, kindergarten and stuff. And I'm, I'm eating drumming now, you know? Well, yeah, I'd like to see that for sure. And I'm chosen. And the, the importance of the drum is, um, it's not only the musical part of it, but it's, there's a lot, there's a, it's really sacred. There's a, you know, big powwow drum. Um, every year we have to feast that drum. We have to have a feast for that drum and feed that because there's spirit. And then, um, when we feast it, we speak for it. Cause it's a, it's delivering. Yeah, I, let me think, you know? You know, because it, the, the shell that comes from the tree, the earth, you know? And then the hide and wasting from it comes from the animals, deer, moose, elk, you know, so on. So we, when we have to, uh, when, when we feast that, it's not like, oh, you know, we, all right. We'll get you, you know, you know, we, we have to um, make a spirit, what's called a spirit plate for it before anybody else can eat. Once you make that spirit plate, with the, we use tobacco. Or we say asema for tobacco. And, um, it's not for like smoking, like singing. Yeah. But, um, it's for prayer. You know, there are people that go to church and go pray, you know? I went to church and I
Can you guys talk a little bit about the difference between this and the religious component to that?
Yep. Although drumming does have spiritual parts to it.
Yeah.
I will say that in our culture, drumming is meant to be, uh, shared and celebrated um, and honor. Um, and that's why it's important to be, include the drumming to honor the students that are graduating. Um, for our more spiritual items in the Jewish culture, um, such as, you know, peace pipe or prayer and those things that would involve like a spirit guide that would come out. And those would not be able to be public. Um, a lot of things in our culture that are religious or spiritual in nature cannot be filmed. They're not meant to be shared. Um, they're meant for our people. Um, so drumming is a little bit different and less religious and spiritual, and that is meant to be celebrated and shared and honor our culture and share it with others. Um, which is why it would be important to have graduation ceremony where
And I've had this a part of other graduation ceremonies where I've been an administrator, Duluth, most recently. I know Ashlyn incorporates this in.
Isn't University of Wisconsin Superior as well?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you to their graduates.
Colastica does as well. They
I feel like for the Midwest, um, just speaking for the Anishinaabe, um, we're in the minimum here of not honoring
Yeah.
Um, the land that we're standing on and our Indigenous students in our schools. Um, we're kind of the odd man out right now by not doing it. It kind of has become, um, widespread, especially over Anishinaabe land. So it'd be important and crucial for us to kind of be a part of that.
I guess, um, one thing I would want to just think about is that our school district is also being respected, respectful and, um, you know, offering maybe medicine pouches or something to the drummers and making sure that we're participating appropriately and gifting, um, because of the gift you are sharing with us. So and Troy, um, Chi McQuich for, um, teaching and, and sharing your gifts and being willing to do this.
We had, we had Spirit Week last week.
I'll share all of that in my report.
Yeah. And we had drum, I just ran the drum there. And, uh, also there.
Yeah.
And
It was neat.
It was, it was neat and I really shocked. I, after we're done singing, all of a sudden.
Yeah.
I'd never got that.
Yeah, not, not only Indigenous students, but all students really enjoyed having the drumming, uh, during lunch. Uh, it was pretty exciting.
Yeah. They also came up and, uh, asked questions about everything.
Also from a student's standpoint, what, what can you add to this?
So what, like the graduation?
Oh, right.
Students.
Well, I guess it would be important, um, well, it'd be cool for me next year because I'm graduating next year and, uh, it's like a big honor to be walking across the stage with drumming going on. Like maybe even like doing the drum like during it, like while I'm graduating. I guess it's like I don't know. I didn't really prepare anything.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
But you can speak.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So questions from, or comments, um, well, I, I've spoken with Amy about this and stuff and then the honor song. And then just what you just said, where is the timing then in the ceremony?
I don't know if we've talked through all the logistics. I think we need to kind of talk through some of that. I know length of our entire ceremony is important. Um, it's hard for to be too long. So I think we just need to be really thoughtful.
Talk about that. Yeah. Honor songs are three to four minutes. So it really wouldn't be a huge length of time.
I've generally seen them at the beginning.
In Duluth, they do it right after the pledge.
Yeah.
So. I mean, it could be any.
So the logistics can all be, can be worked out.
Worked out later, but typically three to four minutes. So not a ton of time, just
Yeah.
Building the space.
And I think, uh, ultimately we bring it forward. This has been asked of us for a number of years. And I just think it's important that we wanted to make sure the board was supportive of this adjustment moving forward. It doesn't necessarily need to be an action item, but I felt like we needed to make sure. They're moving forward. Yeah.
Um, later in the agenda, we are going to approve the hires, resignations, um, and separations. And I just want to welcome Becky and her new rules. And she's on that, uh, list as well.
Good team. Yeah, good team.
So offstage question, extent, like you're talking three, four minutes at the beginning? Or during the entire graduation?
Minutes. At the beginning.
One honor time.
On honors.
Um, yeah, then the honor song. Is there a like a, a translation for people that don't know what you're saying or singing or
Could provide one?
Yeah, it's, we, something like, we could see like
We can incorporate into the program.
Yeah, maybe before approving that we can see like, what is the song that's been, and I mean, is that the right way to say it, song or? Okay. Um, so the wording behind it and the meeting and all that stuff. So we like actually know what we're approving for that.
I think, uh, potentially like an introduction. Um, so when you go to a powwow and they're playing an honor song, oftentimes they explain the meaning of it. Um, and that could be a part of it too. So again, we're really honoring the intention of that song and, and why it's being shared.
We can certainly, I think, share that information with the board before we
And I don't think we need to approve it because we don't do any of the scheduling of the program. That's
You know.
Uh, go ahead.
You
Yeah.
Okay. So my, my concern, and I'm not, I'm not against the drumming. I have propositions, I guess you could say, um, my, my concern as a board approving the drumming, we talked about that it's, uh, you know, it could be used to, uh, speak with your ancestors. We talked about there being prayer for the drum. Um, we talked about um, drum having a spirit, that type of stuff. It, in, in my pains, in a little bit of opinion, it seems like we get to the religious aspect of, of the drumming. And when we discuss separations of when we discuss separations of church and state and what a board can promote, looking at one religion over another.
Well, but it's.
I, I don't, I don't know as a board that we should, you know, approve particularly a, a religion over any other one. Now, my, my proposition would be on the other side is instead of having the board approve it um, for it to be one of two things, uh, a student-led function or students bring it to the, to the school, to Mr. Fezzi. Um, and ask him permission to do it, just like any other, just like any other club or group in the school. Um, so that way, any organization that wants to take part in a graduation can have the same, I guess, opportunity to do so. Or my other proposition would be is can the drumming be combined with the school band that's already there playing, or does it have to be separate?
Separate. My understanding is that native drumming is exempt from church and state. It's protected.
It is, there, there are some, right, but.
And, and again, our honor song would not be religious in nature. It would not have any spiritual religious components to it. It would just be an honor song.
Troy was just celebrating, explaining that the drum itself.
Itself, yeah.
Is spiritual to our people, but drumming as an art form um, and as a way to honor twenty percent of our student body, um, is not religious in nature. It's, it's simply our culture's way of honoring our people. And kids work really, really hard to make it through school. And being able to properly honor indigenous youth is by doing a drum circle. So by us having a graduation ceremony for indigenous youth and not doing it, um, is a cultural issue um, for indigenous people because that is how we honor our students. And so not being able to do that, um, it's a cultural thing, issue, not a religious issue.
Also, so political status.
Our hope would be that students who are participating in the drumming circle now are, would be available to drum for our graduate.
I was gonna ask that is.
It would be a student activity, um, just led by our drum instructor.
So I'm not against, I'm against it. Okay, so let me, let me preface that.
Just wanted to explain the difference.
Again, yeah, you know, I just want to make sure, you know, I don't know, again, we've already said, I don't know if that's, this is the thing our board should even be approving or disapproving. I don't know that it's even really up to us, uh, you know, just like, you know, I have a high school band saying, can we play, can we play our songs, you know, it's, it's whatever the graduation ceremony is with the district.
You can make it informational item.
With Mr. Fezzi, um, reading the graduation ceremony in and of itself. So I'm not even sure we should, but I also don't want to cross any line that there might be with church and state, because I, I do know, yes, there are high schools that do have the drumming. Um, I have research and seen schools that of the very purpose have denied it. That's, and um, I think colleges in general fall into a different category of separation church state because they're not necessarily public funded, whereas more so they're private. So again, I'm not against it, but I think if the students came to the district or Mr. Fezzi and said, hey, is this something we can do? I, I think that they could just say yes or no. Um, but I don't know that.
Is because the, it is really a school board cer- I mean, it's, you're handing out the diplomas. It's really your ceremony in conjunction with the high school administration. But I don't know, Kyle, do you have anything to add to this?
Well, yeah, you, you asked me to look at that issue and it's, it, it, it's, it's a close call. It, it admittedly is, but it's generally speaking, it's viewed as cultural. There are more cases that I wouldn't necessarily use the term exempt, but they find it to fall into a cultural phenomenon. Um, more than uh, some of the other activities, if, if they were presented in that fashion, maybe could be considered to be, have more of a religious connotation, but that's sort of reserved for their own people. So I would, I was uh, unable to find any courts that had issued any injunctions against this. I mean, as a practical matter, somebody would have to come forward and complain. And they'd have to go to a court and the court would have to agree and take a look at the issue. I wasn't able to find any courts that had agreed that it was a uh, a violation of separation of church and state. What there are, there are a couple of cases where uh, as Ed pointed out, the decision was made that it was too close to call, that somebody didn't want to engage in it. Those, um, for, for lack of a better term, and that's not my ballywake, but those, those decisions were pretty solemnly criticized. And I think there were protests and other things that involved not only the Anishinaabe people, but others. So I haven't seen any, any place where uh, where a court has found any cognizance of it being a violation of church and state.
I hear Ed's um, idea, and again, thank you for not being against this. Like, I appreciate that. It sounds like everyone so far is supportive of this. It's a matter of how. And just given um, some of the challenges and given some of the um, challenges we've seen in this district regarding cultural um, concerns. I feel this uh, really solidifies this as something our district will do and is supporting. Um, that gives it less um, shaky ground to be a very solid thing. And also speak to our uh, American Indian students and families, um, that we are behind them. Um, given the very low graduation rates, um, historically of American Indian children, not just in our district, but throughout the state and the nation, there is a huge achievement gap. And so even more compelling to the reason why an honor song um, would really, again, create a more welcoming and accepting environment in our school district.
I don't know if I'm gonna say this right, but.
You gotta say that, probably not.
Probably not. What stops another group of students then from coming forward, um, uh, uh, our Black Student Union, uh, students, you know, that they have that representation, they have a core. What stops them from coming forward and saying, um, we have this cultural song that we want now played at the graduation ceremony as well. And this is just a devil's advocate question. This isn't against what we've got in front of us here, but.
Agreed. Listen.
Yeah, I, I, I'd say what's wrong with that. We recognize that, you know, the ceremony needs to be around an hour. Uh, but if there were an active group of black youth that wanted to um, do their type of drumming, like drum line, I think that would be amazing. Um, and again, it would be a couple minutes. Um, it's just a way to honor. I mean, we do songs and we do certain things that are in, you know, our other culture, like, but we don't recognize, you know, that we're standing, the land that we're standing on is native land. Um, and it's important to recognize that um, through doing a land acknowledgement in the drum circle because this is Anishinaabe land. Uh, so that's, that's the difference.
I, I very much appreciate what you're saying. I guess I should have prefaced this by saying, board members. But I, I, I do appreciate your answer because I think that's what we have to think about too. If, if this goes to an action item, that the school board is going to approve. This opens it up for all groups. And that was my question too. It's, you know, and uh, again, I love the idea, you know. I'm, I'm, I'm a registered tribe member. My kids are. My question is, is where do we shut the spigot off? Like, if it comes to that. And I, I don't know if that's been a not an issue, but it's, it's something that's been brought forward in other school districts, you know, as well or not. So that, that was my question too, Steve.
I think there's, um, the reason the drumming becomes a component of a graduation is that it symbolizes a change, right? It, it has a meaning behind it, um, that they're transitioning to another stage in their life, right? And so it honors that next phase. And so I think that's why it naturally sort of aligns to a graduation ceremony.
Cultural dances or events may not have.
May happen in other components.
May not have the same uh, significance. Um, they may be celebratory in nature as well.
It could happen at a student assembly or other, but this is like a specific talking about the transition.
It's kind of needed in this culture, um, to have the honor song and to be able to celebrate that. So it is a lot of things.
I will say that, coming into this, I was kind of with Steve and like, where do we, where do we stop with the groups, you know, whatever. But um, with the conversation, it's really changed my mind. Like, this is native land, as you're saying. And it could be very powerful and it's, it seems to me, my mind was changed because it's something different. Um, it's not like other cultural groups in my mind, just recognizing that. Um, so I think it'll be cool, to be honest.
We got a message. Uh, and I don't know. I mean, I don't know.
Hard to paraphrase.
It's hard. I don't know. I feel like it's a powerful message and I don't want to speak for this person, but I do feel it kind of captures this. And I don't know if you guys think we should read it.
Uh, so, yeah, we, you, you do want to read it or do you just want to? I mean, we received a Facebook message. It, actually, it was a, a woman in the community who posted on her own personal page, but she tagged the school district of Superior. So Casey was alerted to it and she shared it with me. Um, essentially she was commenting on a video that Becky had shared in her family engagement um, newsletter just recently. Um, but with that, in her, um, in her acknowledgement and her appreciation of sharing that video and sharing the the teachings that we're bringing to our students and not just our native students, but all of our students. And um, just more recognition and more understanding of um, native culture. She really talked about the huge significance and um, importance it would be to bring native drumming to the school district of Superior uh, for graduation. Just, um, I wasn't aware of the activities and accurate education that they have been engaging in on our culture in this day. When I attended the district in both middle and high school, this most certainly wasn't in our curriculum. I hope tonight, the board meeting, that they make a historical step in the right direction and approve our ceremonies to be included for our graduating indigenous community. Indigenous schooling has come such a long way. Keep up the good work, Superior. I think it just shows, you know, as some we, Troy, um, growing up in the district, like we didn't have these options. Our culture wasn't talked about. Um, weren't teaching Thanksgiving properly, that's for sure. Um, so I think just having the indigenous people in our communities, see us take the proper steps in acknowledging um, where we are in our culture. Um, that it just makes them uh, feel more a part, included in our community, um, and more likely to step up and be a part of it. So I just think that was kind of cool. It is, it was great. Yeah, yeah.
I, I think culture obviously is so very important and I know how much it means to me and I know how much it means to you all. Um, I do think that it would be super beneficial to educate people, like we said before, doing it on the honoring aspect, um, because there are a lot of people who are unaware and probably misinformed on what things are and why they're done. Um, and so again, take, take it as a time to educate, you know, people in Superior.
That's a huge problem. And so it's very cool.
I'm sorry I missed your name. Andrew, Becky?
Also. Also Fish.
Also? You talk about hearing the drumming when you, when you walk the stage. So I hear from you, put you on the spot, I'm sorry. What are you feeling? What does it mean to you? And what do you hope that it means to the other students that aren't native maybe?
What it means to me is, um, there's not like a lot of representation for like my culture. So it's, um, like, it feels good to like see it at like something like a graduation where like everyone there is like seeing my cultures. It's basically promoting it, like, like, like teaching people about it, like.
Being proud, right?
Yeah, so it's like a way to, um, like, uh, like be proud of my culture and like, like, because I don't know. Yeah, and for other students that are native, I guess it's kind of the same thing, like they, you don't really learn a lot about like natives and like the culture of them like in school. So it's like good for them to, like, for that to be like graduation, like if it's not in school at least, and I guess.
I'll just say, um, during Native Spirit Week, and I was gonna talk more about this later, but it applies right now. During Native Spirit Week, I was there three days at the high school and the amount of students who came over to just learn and want to learn more about native culture through our trivia games and things that we had going on was phenomenal. And the amount of students that were super engaged in the drumming that happened on Friday uh, was huge. So it was, it was really powerful. Kids are eager and excited to hear and learn more. Um, and, and they're friends with Oso and other native students and they don't know. And so, and they want to be a part of that. They want to know more about them, so.
Again, I just feel like there's a real distinction here and um, I am a non-indigenous person, but we're talking about indigenous people to this land versus other cultural or spiritual, um, you know, practices that are non-indigenous to this land. And so, um, and again, just political status, even American Indian is it's technically a political sta- status, not necessarily just a race, right? And so there's major distinctions and major political um, and rights of indigenous people that really make this a different situation. I understand concerns of the spigot, but I agree with Becky. Great. You know, like, okay, let, if there are other ideas, obviously that's important as well and should be considered, but this really needs to be, um, should be rather a, a stance that has the board's support because of the distinguishing differences.
Any further comments?
There's also, uh, I was able to attend last spring. They hold a separate ceremony for the graduates. They all meet. It was at Billings Park. They had dinner. They had drum circle there. Um, there was songs, there was prayers, there was all those things. And then they were handed stools, right? Is that what they're called? Uh, toward a graduation, which I'm sure many of you have seen in the past. Uh, but the, the drum is, is the heartbeat of that whole ceremony. So bringing that to the, to the full graduation just really represents those people and brings that not only to their own ceremony, but the community as well.
Also, I didn't get to say thank you. Thank you for your answer.
All right, we have a motion in a second. The request to add drumming to the graduation ceremony starting in two thousand twenty-five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, all of you, for your presentation. Next up are our board committee reports, Teaching and Learning Committee, Mr. Schumont. All right, we got a couple of action items. Um, new courses, administration recommends the addition of new courses at Spur High School, uh, Intro to Music Theory, Personal Finance Literacy, Athletic Development and Performance. And those will be taken as one action item. Crystal.
So for those of you maybe new to the board this year.
So excuse me, need a motion, sorry. Motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion another second.
He said my name and I just went. Um, one of your roles, one of your many roles as a board is to approve credit-bearing courses that our students can receive credit for at high school. So that is why this is an action item. The reason this is an action item in the month of December is that uh, the high school is already a course and planning process for the next school year. Course catalog rolls out in January, students register for classes in February. So we back up the train, of course. You know, the high school needs the approval to be able to include these things in their course offerings for next year. Um, of course, Erin is, is still here, hung around in case there are questions. And we have a couple of teachers who worked on that scope and sequences and curriculum and planning for this too, in case you have any questions that um, I can't answer or you'd like to hear from them. So a little bit about the three courses, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about each of these because you have a lot of details on the attached documents that you can access. Um, but just so you have a little bit of a picture, um, the three courses that our departments have brought forward this year are Intro to Music Theory. That would be a point five, so a half-credit elective course, which means it would be one semester throughout the school year. And it would begin for next school year. Um, as you can read more details about this in the form, you will see that the rationale for bringing this course forward is a couple of years ago, we added an AP Music Theory course. And the music department would like to add a more entry-level course, so our students can take some music theory without having to jump to either AP Music Theory or um, instead of having to do that. Um, it would not be a prerequisite that's required to be able to take that AP course. But of course, um, students might be more successful in the AP course if they take this. Um, and that will be taught by our music department. All of our, um, which is very common within a music licensure. All of our, um, which is very common within a music licensure world, all of our current music staff are licensed to teach this course. The second course on here is actually, um, a new course that the state is requiring that we offer, and I know there's a lot of excitement around the idea that our students would be required to take a personal financial literacy course. So, um, I came to you, I think it was last December, saying, this is gonna be happening, um, but it's not required until the graduating class of two thousand twenty-eight, which of course is this year's freshmen. We wanted to put together the scope and sequence and have it approved so it could start being in the course catalog. So as this year's freshmen start planning out their next three years, they can clearly see that this will be part of their senior year experience as a half-credit. Um, there are some, uh, unique requirements about the licensures that teachers would have to have to teach this course. Um, it could be taught within a couple of different departments, possibly by multiple teachers, and of course, the licensure matters. So, um, the high school principal team needs some flexibility where it will fall when the time comes. So that's why it's to be determined what department it would fall in or what teachers would teach that. And then the third class is Athletic Development and Performance. This would fall within the FIAID department. Um, this will be a half-credit, um, that students could take, and it would count towards their required PE credits. Okay, I'm just gonna pause with that, like, brief information and say, do you have any questions about these courses that we could answer for you?
Money.
Money. So that is always a really big thing we talk through, we have to talk through. Are there any, um, resources that would be needed to teach these courses? Um, you know, et cetera. Um, the Intro to Music Theory, uh, and there's a component about resources and money, the money question on the forms for each of these courses. Intro to Music Theory would be a minimal cost of a workbook for each student that takes that course. So I, I forget the exact amount, it's on the form, but it would be a couple of hundred dollars a year, depends on the numbers.
True, that's true.
Um, the Personal Financial Literacy and Athletic Development and Performance don't have any major resources involved with them. What's really cool, of course, uh, is that for the Financial Literacy course, there are a lot of free resources that are starting to become available, really, for already, but are also becoming available through DPI for you to be able to use to teach that course. Um, no traditional textbook will be purchased for that course, or a course for the Athletic Development. So these all have a pretty minimal cost. Good question.
Was that, for the Financial Literacy one, is that five thousand dollars a year? Is that donations, or what? For the foundations in personal finance?
I believe that that is.
It's paid for by National Guard and JMR Financial Group?
So you can get, that's an example of, there are many curriculums that you could choose to use that, um, I wanna say businesses or corporations or organizations could support or give grants towards using some of the resources. There are many examples, and we put just, I think, one or two of them in the scope and sequence. Um, any that are on there are from DPI's Resource Bank as examples. So that might not be the exact one that's used, but it's on there as an example. Good question, thank you.
I would like to hear, um, from maybe one of the teachers just about how, um, an additional curriculum impacts, um, their job or additional roles that they have.
Clarify, this request came from the department, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, this didn't come, yeah, just to clarify that.
Yep, and we, so Amy Iger is here for our music department. I'll let her speak about Intro to Music Theory. And then, and then Dina Wells is here from our FIAID department. Um, just to kind of give a little context, uh, as to what Amy said, um, we really empower our teachers to bring forward these new courses. Obviously, the Personal Financial Literacy is not an option, that one we're moving forward with. But both the Music Theory and the Athletic Development came as ideas from the departments. Oftentimes, ideas are in the works for at least a year, sometimes longer, before they actually come to fruition. We also have a lot of ideas that come forward that don't make it to become a new course, that teachers and departments think through based on student, um, needs, student interests, you know, what would be good courses to add into the offering. So I'll let Amy speak into, what does this mean for them, the course load of your department?
For the course load. So, um, right now, um, we have three music teachers at Crystal, and so, um, what would, this would mean is depending on the enrollment in this course, one of us would be teaching this, would be teaching this course. So it would impact, um, the programs in the, in the, in that, during that one semester, we would have one less hour to teach lessons to kids. So right now, um, for like, my job, I have my two ensembles that I'll be teaching, hopefully next year with three, because enrollment has gone up. Um, and then if I were to take, teach this course, then I would have just during that semester, one hour less available to pull kids in for, for private lessons or group lessons. So, um, it would be the same for, for both band and choir. Um, Tim's schedule is a little bit more full. He's the one that's teaching the AP Music Theory course, so, um, it, we would just look at enrollment and look at our numbers and decide, once, once we get those numbers, who would, who would teach the course, since we're all, uh, able to do that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Great job to the department with the City of the North Parade, too. Thank you. They're not required to take a music class currently or be in band choir.
Down at the high school level, that's not our graduation requirement.
But to take this, the, to take this class specifically, the Intro to Music Theory. I mean, obviously, you would probably wanna be in a music class, but there, there might be somebody.
Interesting thing we discussed, you wanna kind of talk about that?
Um, so of course, the kids that are in our courses would have a leg up, but there are kids that maybe aren't in band choir orchestra, maybe they're taking piano lessons, and they wanna take the AP Music Theory course. So, um, by taking this, this intro course would give them an intro into music theory, and then they would know, is this something that I want to pursue? Do I wanna try taking the AP Music Theory course? Uh, so it basically, the AP, um, course, Chapter Two in that course covers everything that we would cover in the intro course. And Tim, right now, has said I have to spend a lot more time on that chapter than I would like to. And so by offering this, we're hoping that kids are just gonna be set up to be more successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Is there curriculum, like, available to offer the Financial Literacy? It's like, possibility of making this a course a little bit earlier as an option, like, to a, to like, a limited number to kind of try it out, see how we get into that?
It's currently an elective course.
Okay.
And, uh, slight, I mean, we worked with a group to, you know, look at the state standards required of the new, the new course, and it, it's fairly closely, very closely aligned to a current Financial Literacy elective that we have, so there is an option for students.
Is it available freshman through seniors right now, or is it just seniors, or?
No, it's, it's across the board.
Okay. I think it was called Personal Finance when you were in school.
Yeah.
I didn't take that.
It was still wrong.
So really, the concepts in general are already available to our students if they wanted to.
Well, this requires.
Yeah.
For the Athletic Development and Performance, is that something that they can take instead of their physical education requirement?
Hi, Dina.
Hi, Dina. Um, no, it would be part of it, so it would be an option. So right now, um, we have Fundamentals of Fitness for ninth grade, which would be a prerequisite to this, just like it is for the other three classes, um, Personal Wellness, Strength and Conditioning, and Lifetime Fitness and Activities. So this is just an addition to those three options. Um, it wouldn't change our numbers at all, or need of more teachers or anything like that. It would just shift kids from taking one of those three into this that wanna take this as an option.
I think it's important to control that ninth grade requirement of Fundamental of Fitness.
Yes.
This new component stuff, what I see that though, a little bit being, and I'm not against it, don't, because we have talked about this for a number of years, it, it, it looks like it's an emphasis for student athletes. And then, again, how do we get that message to other students, uh, about being more, uh, concerned cognitive of their, their physical health, well-being, and what benefits this particular course could have on them, even though they're not a student athlete?
Right, um, I mean, I, I see where that might come across as, it would be just for athletes, but that's not what we're going to promote at all. Um, it's just for anybody who wants to, um, work on their athleticism, have more rigor in what they're doing, um, in FIAID. Um, it could be for our athletes for sure, but also people who maybe wanna go into the military and get into better shape before that. Uh, we have a lot of kids that do activities outside of our school athletics that, um, you know, my son does jujitsu, and so I could see, well, he'll be a senior, so he won't be able to, but I could see him taking something like this just because he wants to work on that, those athletic skills more than just what we do in the other three classes for, um, shall we have already?
So the, the credit requirement of a credit and a half, within the four years of my high school graduation career, I have my half-credit of my Fundamental of Fitness, and then in my next three years, I could have, I, I could take this two years in a row. Uh, is there a difference in what the curriculum might look like in my tenth grade year compared to my eleventh grade year? Or is it just an enhancement of what?
We have, um, right now, we're doing, uh, A and B year, where one year we're doing, um, we work on the same standards, but maybe the assessments look a little different, the assignments look a little different. Um, and then the B year is just a little bit of a change-up so that if you do end up taking it for tenth and eleventh grade, you're not having the same assessments and assignment.
So it sounds like you don't necessarily, like, individualize it based on if you wanna get stronger or faster? Like, it's, it's kind of structured the same for, for everyone?
Yeah, um, I, you know, Rob was really kind of the head of trying to do this. Um, he wanted to make it very clear that this was not just for football players, and, you know, it's for anybody. Um, and what we'd like to see it be is just a consistent training program for kids, and along with the learning, very standards-based, um, around our FIAID standards. Looking for growth and also some leadership con, um, concepts in there. It's for the, for the really motivated PE student. Um, some kids are not very motivated, surprising me, but, um, but these are, this would be for the kids who really wanna, um, be more carded and, and continue to improve.
I think it's important to note, too, you put the notes in here that two hundred and forty students responded to a recent survey that eighty-five point eight percent said yes, they would be interested in taking this class. So that's great to see.
But sometimes departments will do that to kind of just gauge that interest before putting in the work. I mean, you know, there's obviously work put into creating these scope and sequences and standards and stuff even prior to coming to this. So they have wanna check before putting in the work. Seems like this is just trying to reach a wider variety of learners, and so giving, again, more options, so. Yeah. Any other questions on that action item?
Any further discussion? Thanks, Crystal. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold. Motion carries. Sorry, I was looking at Nick, he was laughing at me.
I thought you were waiting for someone to applause.
I thought Nick had something to say to me, but he didn't, okay. All right, second action item, administration recommends the approval of the district ACP website and ACP E4E plan.
Look at a tiny bit of.
Which motion?
Almost started again.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right.
Please.
All right, I'm introducing Caitlin. No, you guys obviously know her. I just wanted to explain a little bit of cons, context. Um, in the state of Wisconsin, there is a state requirement that we do kindergarten through twelfth grade academic and career planning. So that's what ACP stands for. Caitlin is our, amongst many other things, our ACP coordinator for the district and helps pull all of these pieces together. So we need board approval about the components that we, of course, need to make public on our, on our website. So she's here to tell you a little bit about that, and hopefully you can approve that.
Is this a new notification, or is this an annual notification?
This should be annual.
Okay, yes, it will be annual.
It will be annual.
Okay, yes.
Is website connected to our district website?
Yes.
Or is it probably the server?
I think it will be.
Under, it is.
Oh, it currently is.
Under, um, it's under the Parents tab, I believe, on the district website. Um, so yeah, this, as I have kind of admittedly learned as I went with this, um, one of the things under state statute that we need to have is a ACP, um, E4E plan. Um, and so each section of the plan is, is prescribed. Like, we need to state how we are doing each of these things, and each district, uh, needs to outline how they are meeting each of those components. Um, so this is a, you know, evolving document. It will likely change slightly from year to year. Um, there are not major updates from, you know, one year to the next. Um, but this is just kind of, again, one of those things that, um, is fairly standard in the setup and what's included in it, but personalized to our district and how we're meeting, uh, those different ACP requirements. Um, and yeah, it, it should be reviewed, um, by the board annually, so.
Is there a good time of year to do that, like, September, or is this not a good time of year?
Um, I, I don't know, there's no, like, hard rule on when it should be. I think a lot of the timelines from DPI have it listed in the spring.
Oh, okay.
Um, but there's not, it doesn't, like, require that it, um, happen at a certain time of year, just annually.
And can you just highlight what are some of the key components on here?
Yeah, um, so, yeah, if you wanna scroll, so, sure. Um, so.
Updated too, right? Sorry, when we, it'll be updated once we get our new.
Yeah, yes, we haven't switched it, we're gonna switch it over after holidays. This will, yes, this will be updated. Um, but yeah, so, I mean, ultimately, our ACP work, um, supports our, you know, our strategic plan. So that is a, a foundational document that, that guides this. Um, and so that's included here, that will be updated once the, the new one is, um, and the pretty version is available. Um, and then if you scroll down a little bit, there are various components that, um, we have to consider and share, um, for parents and families and in terms of how we are meeting these different requirements. So reviewing labor market data, um, talking about our, you know, connections to post-secondary education, explicit things we're doing to prepare students for that transition after high school. So things like advanced placement courses, dual enrollment, um, youth apprenticeship, school-to-work, um, you know, things of that nature.
How are my factoring fit under there?
Um.
Or that's too specific, maybe?
No, that should probably be on there.
Okay, I just, yeah, okay.
I don't know if it's somewhere else, or.
Right, uh, maybe under high school?
Yeah. Um, professional development, so there is, you know, are some requirements and expectations that, um, there is professional development provided, um, to district staff around academic and career planning, which we do some of and will hopefully do more.
Sure.
Um, how we engage with families, various ways that families can access this information, um, can access information about their, um, individual students' plans. So a lot of this happens through our counselors, uh, and things like that as well. But, but this kind of outlines there.
Further down.
Um, so again, talking about our community partnerships, um, a lot of this is not only, right now, what's outlined is a lot of community resources that students, uh, might access in that transition time from high school to, um, work or college, um, but also looking at, um, other partnerships we have with local educational institutions, um, things like the career fairs, guest speakers, things like that that come into the schools as well. Um, the next section outlines the curriculum, for lack of a better word, um, and support and other services that students have access to. Um, so a lot of this happens in advisory or at the high school. Spartan Start at the middle school is where a lot of this content that gets delivered, gets delivered. Um, the state of Wisconsin provides access to Zello for students in grades six through twelve. Um, so that is the tool that we use for a lot of the academic and career planning work that students do. Um, that is obviously by no means all-encompassing, but that's one universal tool, um, that we have to use. We, as a district, also use that, uh, with our elementary students as well. Um, we are currently working on creating a more comprehensive ACP scope and sequence and really outlining. and really outlining um more specifically what's happening at each grade level outside of that Zello work as well, um but that is still in progress, so more to come eventually. Um outlining, again, individual ACP support, ways students can access that, um how, you know, how students can access the process, talking about how we have a process, um talking about their access to Zello as the software tool. So that's kind of what's listed in our our plan. Um the goals we've identified um as a group to to work on, one of which is creating that more more specific and more detailed scope and sequence and increasing some professional development around um how to incorporate ACP meaningfully in the classroom as well. So that it, right now, um a lot of where it explicitly happens is in like advisory or Spartan Start, um but finding ways to more naturally integrate that into all.
It has a strong component too for special education students.
Yes.
IEP plans reflect a.
One kind of cool is about six years ago, um the University of Wisconsin um looked for districts to volunteer to, yeah, Steve, you were a part of that conversation, um to basically have our plans at that time around ACP be evaluated by an outside source. So they interviewed teachers, students, administrators, a lot of parents, they had focus groups, and then gave us feedback on our plan, which has really helped shape the plan and then the work that Caitlin has done to kind of lay the groundwork for this.
And part of why this came up now is um CISA 12, each CISA, I believe, has to submit a plan and site to DPI to be used as an exemplar. Um and they reached out wanting to use ours, and there were a couple of things that needed to be fixed, one of them being a recent state of board approval. So that drew that to our attention, which we'd missed previously. So uh this will likely be, if all goes as planned, used as a DPI um exemplar as well for other districts. Hold on.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those motion carries. Information item, Jennifer Libby, Director of Early Childhood and Family Engagement, Media and Education Update, welcome back.
Thanks, I'm going to be fast. Talked a lot already tonight. Um I just wanted to share some highlights of this last month. So uh November was Native American Heritage Month and we had a lot of things going on. So I just wanted to share with all of you what we did. Um we had posters at all of our schools, elementary, middle and high school of um 12 or more famous Native Americans. Um and what was really cool about that, I heard several stories from um different teachers and administrators in conversation with students, but um students really connected with them and appreciated having them on the wall and uh felt like they finally saw themselves in their building. So that was really powerful, very cool, just a simple little thing that we did, but it was, it was good. Um we had five days of Native Native Spirit Week. Um like I said, we were at the high school three of those days, um having trivia games at the high school. I have learned that uh high school students will do anything for candy and swag. We had stickers and we had buttons and candy there every day. They were happy to come over, play games and uh really interact, but it was, it was fun. They were, they were excited to learn um about the various topics that we had trivia games around. Troy was there one um one day and we had three, three periods of lunch and we had drumming in all three of those. Um and like he shared clapping and students coming around to ask questions and some students tried it, lots of video, lots of conversation about it, so that was very exciting. Um we, during Native Spirit Week, I shared information with staff and students, um so push that out, how well or how much it was shared, I I don't know. Um but I do know students at the high school came over and were talking about different topics and had heard bits and pieces of things, so that was exciting. Um we had uh fry bread family nights during our Native Spirit Week and we had about 75 people attend. It was, it was a really great event. Um we learned how to make fry bread uh and got to eat some, so that was great. Um all the families left with a book. Um and we had traditional lacrosse um there. Uh Bill and Chrisak, one of our student teachers at the high school, came with his um handmade lacrosse sticks, some were his own, some were friends of his, um and he taught students how to play traditional lacrosse, which is much harder than lacrosse that we play now. Um so that was cool, kids were super engaged in that, super red faced, running around for hours, that was great. Uh we of course had drumming there, we had our students from Drumming Circle who were there to um to do the drumming and lead drumming, and we had a lot of students who were excited and eager to try it. Um and um I know I see one thing, oh, we had a Jibway Bingo that night, so we had that going as. We did, thank you. One of the weeks during Spirit Week, we um we gave orange shirts to our uh native students um to celebrate or to honor uh to honor those who were impacted by um residential boarding schools. So um we had great turnout, it was great to see students wearing them. Middle school had a huge group of students pose for a picture um and it was, it was really powerful. We had a lot of students, we had staff reaching out saying, I want one of those, or can I get one of those shirts too? Uh so that was cool. Um we had students sharing their culture and practices just throughout the week, throughout the month. Um I would receive emails and pictures. We had a student at Northern Lights in the fourth grade show up in his grass dance regalia one day um to show his, his peers in his um classroom. So teachers sent me pictures. We had a student at Cooper um come with her mom and her uncle, and she came in her jingle dress and showed her dancing and they did drumming and um mom brought her beautiful beadwork that she creates and they just shared their culture and so that was really cool. We had some students at the high school come in their ribbon skirts for Dress Your Best Day and it was just really fun to see students getting excited um to share, to share about themselves. Um this month also, we pushed really hard on forms. We've collected over 70 forms since the start of the school year, so that's been very.
These new forms or do you have to do it every year?
We don't have to do it every year, there's our new.
These are new, wow.
Um new forms um that we've collected and we've given away, I don't even know, countless books. We still have lots more books to give away, so we'll be doing that for a while. Uh we have a new Facebook page that we got up and running. Um so we're trying to promote things on there and get some traction that way. Uh we have a new family engagement coordinator, Becky's been doing an amazing job, she jumped right in on day one, so that was exciting. She actually started the week of Spirit Week, so it was a great week for her to get started um and meet families. And we had our first ever Indigenous family engagement newsletter that she shared out. So that was our month. It was a little exhausting, but it was good, it was all good. Thanks, any questions? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. Okay, next information item, Test Director of Continuous Improvement Assessment, update on 2023, 24 student achievement data and DPI report cards.
Uh here I am, annual report on the two things because they fit pretty closely together. So I'm going to do my best to give you a little overview on where we are with our achievement and how that ties into the school report cards. Pause at any time, ask me questions as we go. I'm going to try my very best to make it make sense. Unfortunately, it's somewhat complicated in terms of the formulas that they use and how this all computes out. So uh don't be afraid to ask uh as we go through. So I just wanted to kind of ground us in the basic, the base level of our strategic planning work. I know we've talked about that at at each of the last few meetings. Um as this work becomes finalized, we did uh, we have a meeting with Joe, our our consultant next Friday to kind of continue on creating the scorecard, that district measurement tool that we'll be coming back with. So that will be incorporated next year, kind of I think into this presentation. So here's how buildings are doing, here's how we're looking at our measures as a district. But I just kind of wanted to put us back to, here we are as our strategic plan really driving the work that we're doing. From that process, as everyone is pretty aware, but as a reminder, then our buildings create their continuous improvement plan goals. Uh we will have, each year we've kind of created a one-page document that outlines that. I'm, I'm waiting on the strategic plan kind of finalization in that document layout so that I can mirror that graphic design with the school building uh goals and then those are, those will also be linked onto the website. So just kind of that progression from our strategic plan, from a district vision to our school improvement plans. Um then I think it's important to kind of think about what assessments are, what we're measuring from a state perspective and then from a local perspective as a district. So the state assessments uh that are incorporated into the report cards, that the accountability report cards from uh the state of Wisconsin, from our Department of Public Instruction, these are now what are classified as our state assessments. So our forward exam is the, you know, we have the most students that take the forward exam and that is grade three through eight uh in language arts and math. And then in, in fourth and eighth grade, we also add science and social studies. And then in 10th grade, our 10th graders just take the social studies component of the forward exam. The dynamic learning maps is our state's alternative assessment, which is given to students who do not access uh the state standards. So their IEP um puts them in a place where they're accessing uh different essential element standards and then this is the assessment that correlates. It is important to note that uh students who take the, this is referred to as the DLM, the dynamic learning maps assessment, are included in the report card in the same proficiency categories as our other students who take the forward exam, the pre-ACT or the ACT. Then uh the ACT is our state assessment for grade 11 students, including the writing portion. Uh just as a clarifier, students can take the ACT on their own and the writing is always an optional component, but as a part of the state assessment, writing the essay is not. We did have over about 100 kids take the fall ACT, optional fall ACT, and we're working on uh kind of a prep, some prep options for those students to now take their score from fall to see uh what they can do in March. So that has been an exciting process. The pre-ACT is our ninth and 10th grade state assessment. I will say that's been a nice change that we're only on year two of that assessment, but it really does give kids a starting point for preparing for the ACT. So they get a comparable, like if you were to take the ACT, you'd be about in this range. So it's a nice place for us to start with 10th graders as we prepare this spring to take the ACT in 11th grade. And then new this year, Ames Web Plus uh is a state assessment, it's our early literacy screener. I don't believe that this, there are no plans right now for this to be included into the report card, but I do think it's an important piece of saying we have now this additional layer of a state assessment at the 4K through grade three level. In addition to that, uh those assessments don't give us everything we need to know and make sure that we're um staying up to speed with our students and their development. So we have a variety of assessment tools that we use locally and I don't spend a lot of time here, I've talked about these at different times, um but just that sense that we do have, these are the things that are helpful along the way, not just the one time of year, state assessments. In addition to all of that information, we also look at other data points. The principals, I think, have done a nice job sharing lots of different pieces that we're looking at, not only that assessment data, but demographic data, our attendance data, our behavior data, our perception survey data, climate survey data, and then that last component of implementation data, which is really telling us, we said we were going to do some, some things, some actions, did we actually carry that out? Helps us to measure, are we doing what we said we were going to do? So that all brings us to kind of the snapshot in our achievement data. Typically, um so that my presentation isn't six hours long, we highlight fourth, eighth and 11th grade and we've done that over the last few years. That doesn't mean we don't have data points on third through 11th grade, so uh we have additional information, lots and lots of data. Here's what I think is really important as I go through this. ELA, English Language Arts is on the left side of the screen, math is on the right side of the screen, so what you're seeing right now is fourth grade information. 2018, 19 is the leftmost bar, set of bar graphs. You're seeing two bar graphs, you're seeing the light blue is our district's performance of percent of students proficient, advanced, together, so proficient and advanced, or what is now called meeting and advanced. So the category name changed this year. So, and the red bar graph is the same information on the entire state of Wisconsin. I changed the display a little bit this year because the state came out with new performance levels and new cut scores and new assessment questions this year. So technically, that's why there's an asterisk by 23, 24. Uh the state would say, don't put these on the same graph, you can't compare the data. Well, that's there, they, they say that, but we all say, yeah, but if I'm looking at how our kids did this year, I want to know how they did before. So I just want you to be, it kind of highlighted the 23, 24 information, uh because I do think you can see some trends and obviously uh there is no state assessment data from 1920, my first year in this job, so it's a convenient year to become from a state director. Uh so we have some trend data you can see. So again, you're seeing us, the percent of our students who were deemed proficient or advanced by the state of Wisconsin in the blue, the percent of students in the state of Wisconsin who are proficient and advanced or now what is called meeting and advanced. So ELA, English Language Arts and math. We've talked a little bit about our math uh and our, our definite need for work and and there has been a lot of work uh done this year and we will continue on, we have lots of work and lots of areas to do uh as we move along, looking at, again, one snapshot throughout the year. So I'm gonna keep going, feel free to ask questions as we go. So this is the same information that you're seeing now with eighth graders. So again, on the left, English Language Arts, you are seeing the data showing proficiency for students in the advanced category um as compared to the state of Wisconsin. So again, uh the test was different this year. One of the ways that I think um we've been looking at the data, the state did not release it this way, but what we've been looking at to try to compare a little more accurately is to look at what percentile a student scored last year or two years ago versus what percentile they scored this year, regardless of the category. So if I scored at the 52nd percentile in 2022, but I scored at the 60th percentile in 2023, I, I grew as compared to the rest of the students in the state of Wisconsin, regardless of the category. So with principals, we've been doing more work utilizing percentiles, it is not something that the state displays, uh they have stuck with the categories and they've, there is not a straight cut score as to what percentile equates a meeting or advanced category. So that's why that percentile, so it gets complicated because it isn't like if you hit the 50th percentile, you're meeting the expectation or you're in the meeting category. So we talked a little bit about this um with our math data earlier, I think Brooke had asked the question, um in the gaps that grow, um the middle school has done a lot of work trying to make the connection for kids between taking fast bridge assessments seriously in fall, winter and spring and trying to really internalize, like I'm gonna try, I'm gonna get a better score than I did in the fall to the winter to the spring, and we're trying to see some carryover here. We did uh see some growth from the previous year. We had hoped it would be even more significant, but we were happy to see growth over 22, 23. And then this is our final data point that I pulled just to kind of get the snapshot across grade levels, our 11th graders. And then this is our final data point that I pulled just to kind of get the snapshot across grade levels, our 11th graders. The ACT is interesting because the ACT wasn't created as the Wisconsin State Assessment. The ACT was created as a college entrance exam. And so they have merged how they report scores by composite score. So it's a zero to thirty-six. Uh, students receive a score from zero to thirty-six as a composite, which is the average of all of the subtest scores. Not including writing, because writing's optional. But for the state, the state doesn't report by composites. We get that information, but they don't report out proficiency by composite score. They report out proficiency just like they do for the forward exam. So this is again, um, the percent of students in the meeting or advanced categories, just like for eighth grade and fourth grade. So you're seeing, as you, as you can come, as you see and compare, uh, we have, we had some nice celebrations of outperforming the state in ELA this year, um, which was nice to see. And again, our math data is growing, um, and we're closing that gap a little bit with our work to do.
Okay, um, maybe this, I'm not a data person. I'm so sorry. I use other people to do that. Right? And I'm wondering, like, there's, there's gotta be kids that are like just below, right? Like, is that, is that potentially where our kiddos are at or like, how big of a gap is it from needing to where the other students are?
Yeah, so developing, uh, so we, I think one of the areas, and I'll talk a little bit more about it uh in the report card.
Okay.
It's okay. It's a great question. That's something that principals drill into very specifically when the results.
I was like, that's a great question at every school. We ask that same question.
The principals are looking at the list of their third and now fourth graders, but their fifth graders have gone to middle school from last year's data. Again, we get this information midsummer when the kids have taken the test in April. So it's like this leg and now we're in summer. But the principals are dissecting that information and really looking at, okay, where there are like five kids who, if we can, if they have a better day than they had this day, they would have been proficient and we do see some trends there. We are really, um, the focus really is on getting kids out um of our lowest category so that we can really see some movement. And yes, historically, and this is not one hundred percent true across each category, but historically, prior to twenty-three, twenty-four, students had to score roughly in the sixtieth percentile at the state of Wisconsin to be proficient. So when you take a bell curve and you think I have a hundred kids in a room, I have to outscore sixty of them to be proficient. Pretty high bar, um, give or take what, you know, how you're looking at the information. So, um, I think as we, um, as we're developing and approaching, those are the two new category names. I just have to keep repeating them frequently so I don't misuse them. As we're looking at our kids who are approaching, they are, many of them are very close and we would probably consider them proficient in our classrooms because they're able to perform standard, they're on their meeting standards.
Thank you.
I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that in kind of some context to the report cards, but I wanna just pause. Any other achievement specific questions, comments right now?
Does it break it down by what kids are struggling in, like?
So, yes and no. Um, the, I think if you were to say, what would actually make this, especially the forward exam data more helpful to principals and teachers and all of us, it would be timely reports. So if a kid, it's all computerized. If a kid takes this April twentieth, we get the data back May first or tenth or twentieth.
Right.
I think that would be helpful. And then it is, um, there are people in my job around the state who have kind of come together and been able to manipulate the reports that we receive from the state so that we can have a breakdown of where students are struggling more than others. Um, but we don't get the question, we don't get any information like, here was the question and here's how many kids struggled on it or which questions I got right or wrong as a student. So it doesn't get that specific.
Sure.
Which is what would be helpful. It would be very helpful as an instructional tool.
We had that in Minnesota.
And Minnesota does have that. So it's timely results.
If a child doesn't know the answer, are they instructed to guess?
Yeah, so the directions go through a pretty specific script and um it is not a, the forward exam is not adaptive, nor is the ACT. So you can go back and forth between questions within a session. So the directions do say it is the ACT directions, which I just read a couple of weeks ago. It is to your advantage to answer all questions. And then sometimes when you're reading that, you take a really long pause. Make sure it like sunk in. It's to your advantage to answer all the questions. Yeah. All of the forward exam questions are not multiple choice. Some are um like drag and drop or organize these. There are some technology enhanced questions, they call them. So they're not just a straightforward uh or underline click on both two words in the paragraph that answer the question. So they are more higher level thinking questions than just a straight multiple choice. But yes, those are.
And there's no more bubbles and scan trons.
The bubbles, no more. Uh, there, yes, those still exist in some places, but not here. Uh, all right, I'm gonna talk about the report card. Uh, if you have a thought that comes back, just let me know. So the state of Wisconsin accountability report cards were released. We did a, David quite helped me with the press release. We released that on, I believe, November twentieth, um, short article in the Telegram about that. So one of the things that is the most difficult uh work that we do with principals and coaches is to try to analyze the report card to give us like actionable information. Um, it's one of the things that gets, the more you dig in, the more questions you have and the more complex. And I think usually I use my example of like doing your taxes and reading the manual and the, the instruction manual. And the more you go, and then you're here and you're referencing like six places, um, and maybe no one else likes doing their taxes like I do. But that, this is my analogy to that is it is not straightforward. So there are four categories that make up, there are four priority areas that make up every school's report card score. All of these report cards are now public. You can also search any report card for any school or district in the state of Wisconsin on the website. Um, which is helpful to see, okay, so here's where we're at. How are other schools doing? And, and maybe, you know, how, what are they doing to make, make a difference in certain areas, especially like math, for example? So there are four priority area categories. Achievement and growth together make up fifty percent of every school's report card score. But it is not the same percentage by school. It is impacted by your free and reduced lunch percentage. So the, the department and with statisticians determined that schools should not be measured on straight achievement only. And that if your school has a higher percentage of students who are in the low socioeconomic status, their percentage, this fifty percent should be more heavily weighted on growth. So they might not be achieving at proficiency, but we can show they're making growth. So maybe they started really low, but now they're growing. And what that means is that every school in our district and across the state has different percentages here. So there's a little slider tool that the principals use to determine like how, what percent of my score will be growth versus straight achievement. Uh, so for example, and my numbers won't be accurate, but a school with a high amount of socioeconomic, um, low socioeconomic status students might have seventy-five percent of their score. Seventy-five percent of the fifty percent of their score be a growth score and only twenty-five percent be achievement. Where as a school, another school might have that totally opposite. So that's fifty percent of the score, those two things. They're not the same at every building. And then the other fifty percent, twenty-five percent is made up of target groups and twenty-five percent of the score is made up of one of those measures of on track to graduation. So uh, the target groups, I think, are an important point to Laura's point. So the target group is twenty-five percent of the score is your lowest twenty-five, twenty-fifth percentile of your students on those four measures. So essentially, your kids who score in the bottom quartile of your school. So you have a hundred kids, the bottom twenty-five, even if they were all proficient, would be your target group. So they take your kids, here's the twenty-fifth, the bottom twenty-five percent. Those kids get added into the mix again. So it is to your benefit to raise the bottom twenty-five percent of your students, however high you can get them, because their score is now going to count for, again, for twenty-five percent of the report card score. And then the on track to graduation, twenty-five percent of the score depends on your level. So our elementary schools, they all have their third grade ELA achievement count a second time. So it counted in the achievement category and now it counts a second time. The middle school, it's their eighth grade math, which we've identified is an area of concern. Now that's counting again as another twenty-five percent. And the high school, it's their graduation. So that is a very like, very simplistic breakdown. If you are intrigued by this and want.
I don't think you should feel compelled to understand this completely. I, I struggle. So this is very complicated.
Just, I was, thank you, Maria, for the article, I, you know, that you put in this period telegram and covering that. And, and I just think it's telling to look at Maples data versus Superiors and Solon Springs and think about the funding difference. Um, you know, that, the, the pupil rate for the Maple versus Superior, there are, there's differences there. And if you have fair funding, then you have the resources, additional resources to support the kind of work that we need to do to close the achievement gap.
I think I just sent staff email today, but our new threat now is we're going to lose over a million dollars in federal funding next year. Um, and so the gains we just made in our referendum, we will now be going backwards again. And it directly impacts these target groups. This is what the money is geared toward, is to address these different groups. And our most vulnerable kids now are the ones that will be impacted by that funding loss. So frustrating.
I, I don't just, I mean.
Sorry.
No, as much as I enjoy this, because I like numbers, I, I am not saying you do need a deeper level of understanding. But if it is intriguing to you and you want like the next level, I'm happy to kind of walk through with some school report cards for you. I think we have some huge celebrations here, um, highlighted in the press release that we sent out. But um, we have um, a number of schools exceeding expectations. We had a number of schools make gains over their last year report cards. Um, so I think we have a lot to celebrate. Obviously, there was a single principal who was like, all right, I'm good with this. Everybody was looking for the next gain and celebration. Um, and I think, uh, I know that Christine at Cooper did a very nice job also celebrating those Lake Superior gains and celebrations with her staff who contributed to that. So a, a lot to be proud of, even in that complex system of uh how this is.
Given the, the previous slide and knowing that our student populations may look different, I'm assuming that's gonna impact their report cards next year, right?
Yeah, I think you'll definitely see some changes, um, both in the achievement by building and then also in the report card. Um, but I think as you see, uh, you know, we had some pretty awesome gains in a number of school, like, like Superior, those kids are now spread out and they were exceeding expectations, which will really support other buildings as well. So yes, I think, I expect to see a number of changes as do principals next year, just your student populations in many places.
For real, we have forty-eight percent economically disadvantaged. I should know that, but isn't that way higher than it was? I thought it was in the fifties.
Then it's, it hovers around fifty percent.
Dang.
Our schools do.
Yeah, our schools, okay. Yeah, like, uh, that's why I was saying, I was saying, like Northern Lights is like seventy percent.
Yep. And then I think just enclosure, obviously, we've talked a lot about this through our strategic planning work as well. But we just continue to make sure that we're supporting buildings with their continuous improvement goals to address achievement concerns, to address um attendance and all of the, the pieces that are worked into their continuous improvement plans as well. So. Questions?
Can you email this?
I will, yeah, for sure. But I mean, anything comes up after you literally digest it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You did a good job explaining.
That's it. You're kidding. No, it's pretty short. Well, thank you. Next, our personnel negotiations committee, Ms. Barrett.
All right. One action item, administration recommends approval of the December twenty twenty-four new hires and separations report.
Motion to approve.
Diana.
Second, is there any discussion?
Welcome.
And goodbye.
And goodbye. Diane Grimaldi, she's been with us a long time.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. I have no discussion items and no information items. So that ends my report, Mr. President.
It's the way we love.
Yes.
Our budget insurance committee, Matt Olson.
One action item, uh, gifts, grants and bequests. Administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants and bequests received in November twenty twenty-four.
Motion approved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Just wanna say thank you to all the people on the list. Uh, very much needed and appreciated. So, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. No discussion items. One informational items, fund ten revenue and expenditure reports. David, you have any?
Got seven million dollars to do. Could be a while after that.
I just had one question. The notorious miscellaneous revenue is, we're already almost double our budget, but it's a, for a reason.
Uh, it's random, like last year you. Huge, I think it's like fifty thousand dollars. Uh, it's just, it's money where it can't be put into a pot. What usually happens is I ended up talking to our auditors and it's something else. And it's kind of our, all our money goes. Um, I think the big one on this one, what I remember is that last month, I think we got a rebate on an expense from a prior year. So it's a prior year expenses, just a bump up. So references, so, so, and it will go up and down as we have to move stuff with the auditors. And then I guess the other thing is, um, when people are looking at this, they get some asks about, we're running on like a negative balance. So I'm a lot of hurry up. Um, by definition, a budget is an estimate. It's an educated estimate. It's gonna be, um, I already talked to my, our last admin meeting, mental directors and principals, saying maybe meet in December so we can do an evaluation. Everything the budget is looking at so far, um, kind of the philosophy we have is we give them the freedom, like if it's people went to the grocery store, you spend ten extra dollars in the dairy department, that means you save ten dollars in the meat department. That's kind of what's happening there. Um, there will be times where they'll, they'll exceed their budget. That's, that's gonna happen. That's life, especially with, um, you know, inflation and just random costs that might pop up. Um, what I tell people is exceeding your budget isn't always a bad thing. If you can explain why you exceeded your budget.
And then you have the conversation next about whether the budget needs to be adjusted for the next year if it wasn't one time.
Yep.
Yeah.
How do you, how do you, how do you make sure you're closer on your, your educated guess? Um, one thing that I'm evaluating and you might see is in the past, we've never, it's called adopting the budget, but our system, we've never adopted the budget, the system. And thinking about actually doing that and then creating a, uh, another budget home, which is there's two types of budgets. You either do your budget, I created my budget, here it is, with a letter buck. It's wrong, it's wrong. We're not gonna make any adjustments. And that, I do adjustments as we get more information. I'm going through. So at that, if we did that, we would have to adopt an additional budget for our district student of the year. Um, but then the numbers are more solid. Look, I don't, I don't know where exactly reside on. I prefer a budget being set and we'll go back and evaluate, why did we miss it? Was it changed all this time? But that's just my, my personal philosophy.
That, that's awesome, David, and I appreciate what you do. And um, actually, something I wrote down, I see Bobby's coming up. You know, with the sale of Lake Superior, um, obviously the maintenance list that we all received, um, there was a lot of significant budget things on there related to Lake. there was a lot of significant budget things on there related to Lake Superior. So maybe, you know, that's a huge, uh, planning thing that impacts our budget in the future. So, um, wondering if, if that's a part of the conversation, maybe we'll hear from you about that, Bobby, as well.
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, the expenses are a little bit higher overall. We never hold any money to do that. Something that's, it's gonna be off of our facility.
Okay.
Which means that we can, you know, those high level items are kind of superior a lot. That means providing to create lakes, so it's like we're really focusing that, as I say. We need to make sure that we maintain those benefits.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? That concludes my report.
Thank you. Operations Committee, Sarah.
Uh, no action items, no discussion items. Informational items, Bobby is here from Buildings and Grants to do a safety update.
Okay, I just got a short one hour presentation. Hopefully everybody's jazzed up for this, right?
Ready for the quiz?
Actually, it's just, uh, me updating you on a, on a inspection. Uh, we had an inspector from the Wisconsin Department of Safety and Professional Services come up here on November sixth to do a, a safety audit of the district. Uh, we met in, um, started off in HR. They went through all of our training records, our accident reporting records that Molly and her group takes care of. Everything looked great there. Um, she does a good job doing, taking care of all that for the district, so. Then we went over to the high school, went through the high school. Well, we actually ended up at the middle school and the high school both. That's where she wanted to go, so. And what we focused on was our art rooms, our science rooms, our shops, uh, boiler rooms, and then like the pack, we walked through the back of the pack over there. Uh, just identifying anything that needs to be corrected. Uh, in total, we had, uh, six safety violations, which a violation is a violation, right? But there, I would consider these minor violations, like one fire extinguisher in the building that had something that was blocking to get to it, you know?
Easily fixable, right?
Easily fixable. They were all, as a matter of fact, when we got our report, it was like three days later, I sent back the completion report and she verified that everything's good to go there. So it went by good. It wasn't always the case like that. We've really strived over the past probably decade or better just to get it where it is now. I've seen such a big growth in our, in our safety side of the house, both in our shops, which has always been my biggest stressor is our, our shop classes at the high school, you know, not really taking safety to the level that I, I felt that they should. And I've seen such a huge turnover in, in just that regards, uh, uh, you know, to give you an example, safety glasses wasn't required in the shop unless you were actually using something that required safety glasses. Where at all shops, once you cross over that line, everybody has on safety glasses, because that could be kicked across the room and, and hurt anybody at this point, right? So that, I've noticed that change, just the, the overall uh, cleanliness and housekeeping of our shop spaces is just dramatically different now. So that's all stuff on a good, uh, on a good note. So this was the second inspection. The first one that, since I've been here, we've had two times the states come up and inspected, and the last time was in twenty twenty-two. So uh, everything went good. I felt good about it.
And everything's already corrected.
Everything's already correct.
Yeah.
Anybody got any questions?
Work?
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's long enough.
Talking about. That's all for the Operations Committee.
All right, then let's move to the Policies and Rules Committee, Mr. Gallier.
All right, a couple of action items, each one an individual here. First reading of policy eighty-five forty on vending machines.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion on the addition to the non-discrimination statement for vending machines?
Uh, no, this was just a requirement. We, and.
We're not discriminating against other vending machines, huh?
Um, Jamie's looked at both of these policies, make sure they given his recommendations there, so.
Any discussion on vending machines? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, saying aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next one is first reading of policy eighty-five thirty-one on free and reduced priced meals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Again, I think there's just some language changes. I really don't change a whole lot. And the non-discrimination portion as well, so. Any discussion?
Don't hate me, but I don't know what, um, I looked it up a little bit, uh, C E P is, Jamie, can you just?
Usually eligibility. Um, we have, uh, we look at this about every couple of years. It's kind of how we operate our free breakfast for all students program.
Okay.
And it's based on a percentage of our free and abused population times about a one point six, and we would lose money in our program with the amount of free and reduced students we have. But we look at it like every other year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, saying aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on. We have no discussion items and no informational items, and that concludes my committee.
Well, thank you very much. Sarah, motion to adjourn. Motion second, to adjourn, all of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much for being here tonight.